Hi, everybody. Do we need a call roll?
Yeah, just to make sure we have a quorum.
Okay.
Jimenez.
Present.
Peralas.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Carrasco.
Here.
Davis. Esparza. Arenas. Foley.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
Jones.
Present.
Liccardo.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. We will resume with two more items. 10.2 is a site development permit for site at 35 South Second Street. We do have a presentation. Hello, Chris, Robert and team.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris Burton, Director of Planning, Building and Code Enforcement, joined tonight by Historic Preservation Officer Dana Peak, Deputy Director for Development Review, Robert Manford, and our Principal Planner for Environmental Review, David Keon. I'm going to hand it over to Robert to go through the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Robert Manford, Deputy Director for Planning. We are excited to bring before you today West Bank's Fountain Alley project for your consideration. The project components entail construction of a 21-story mixed-use building consisting of 194 residential units, approximately 30,800 square feet of commercial retail spaces, and 368,000 square feet of office space. The other project component is to allow extended construction hours from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Saturdays over the entire construction period, which is approximately 34 months. The project also includes the removal of two ordnance-sized trees and 10 ordnance-sized trees. The site is a 1.25-acre surface parking lot located on Second Street between San Fernando Street and East Santa Clara Street. It is also located within the San Jose Downtown Commercial National Register Historic District. A notable landmark is the Bank of Italy Building, which is located immediately adjacent to the west of the project site. The general plan land use designation for the project is downtown with employment priority overlay and the zoning for the site is downtown primary commercial. The key design concepts of the project include encouraging pedestrian connection and activities, cava linear form and urban room, which is a plaza, and inverse program to provide a more appropriate scale to the pedestrian podium levels to reduce the massing of the project. The project was reviewed for consistency with the downtown general plan land use designation, general plan major strategies, major land use policies, and employment priority overlay in addition to applicable city council policies and the zoning code development standards. The project does not fully comply with the downtown San Jose Historic District design guidelines. However, it substantially complies with the 2019 downtown design guidelines and standards. A supplemental environmental impact report to the downtown strategy EIR was prepared for the project. And public circulation was from June 17, 2022 through August 2, 2022. We received four comment letters during the public review period. And the EIR identifies significant and unavoidable impacts to cultural resources due to the lack of compliance with the 2003 Historic Design Guidelines and 2019 Guidelines and standards. However, the project had less than significant impact with mitigation for air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, hazards and hazardous materials, and noise and vibration. Staff recommendation is for the city council to adopt a resolution certifying the supplemental environmental impact report, adopt a resolution approving the site's development permits, and adoption of a statement of a variety of considerations for sequer impacts to cultural resources as previously indicated. This concludes staff presentation. And the applicant is available. We are also available to answer any questions that the mayor or city council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Okay, let's go to the public. And let me just say, I see several hands up from members of the public. And let me be really clear. We're only hearing testimony from the public about this site at 35 South Second Street. If you're concerned about a quick build housing community somewhere else in the city, this is not the time to speak. But we will notify you when it's time to speak, which is open forum, which is in two more items. Tony?
Quinta?
Hello?
Hello?
Yes?
Yeah.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we got you. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you to the council for giving us the opportunity to bring another project forward. This one is really important to us and really special. We've done a number of collaborations with the Buckyard Ingalls Group, who've also designed the Bank of Italy, which we also own. What really stuck out to us is, you know, when the Bank of Italy was built, it really was a monumental piece, high density, and we're really looking to do the same here. And while respecting the historic district, looking at BART coming downtown, how can we do, you know, add another centerpiece to downtown like Bank of Italy was able to do?
You look there, so.
Hi, everybody. Do we need a call roll?
Yeah, just to make sure we have a quorum.
Okay.
Jimenez.
Present.
Peralas.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Carrasco.
Here.
Davis. Esparza. Arenas. Foley.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
Jones.
Present.
Liccardo.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. We will resume with two more items. At 10.2 is a site development permit for site at 35 South Second Street. We do have a presentation. Hello, Chris, Robert, and team.
Thank you, Mayor, Chris Burton, Director of Planning, Building Code Enforcement, joined tonight by our Historic Preservation Officer Dana Peak, Deputy Director for Development Review, Robert Manford, and our Principal Planner for Environmental Review, David Keon. I'm going to hand it over to Robert to go through the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Robert Manford, Deputy Director for Planning. We are excited to bring before you today West Bank's Fountain Alley project for your consideration. The project components entail construction of a 21-story mixed-use building consisting of 194 residential units, approximately 30,800 square feet of commercial retail spaces, and 368,000 square feet of office space. The other project component is to allow extended construction hours from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Saturdays over the entire construction period, which is approximately 34 months. The project also includes the removal of two ordinary-sized trees and 10 non-ordinary-sized trees. The site is a 1.25-acre surface parking lot located on Second Street between San Fernando Street and East Santa Clara Street. It is also located within the San Jose Downtown Commercial National Register Historic District. And a notable landmark is the Bank of Italy Building, which is located immediately adjacent to the west of the project site. The general plan land use designation for the project is downtown with employment priority overlay, and the zoning for the site is downtown primary commercial. The key design concepts of the project include encouraging pedestrian connection and activities, caveline reform and urban room, which is a plaza, and inverse program to provide a more appropriate scale to the pedestrian podium levels to reduce the massing of the project. The project was reviewed for consistency with the downtown general plan land use designation, general plan major strategies, major land use policies, and employment priority overlay, in addition to applicable city council policies and the zoning code development standards. The project does not fully comply with the downtown San Jose Historic District Design Guidelines. However, it substantially complies with the 2019 Downtown Design Guidelines and Standards. A supplemental environmental impact report to the Downtown Strategy EIR was prepared for the project, and public circulation was from June 17, 2022 through August 2, 2022. We received four comment letters during the public review period, and the EIR identified significant and unavoidable impacts to cultural resources due to the lack of compliance with the 2003 Historic Design Guidelines and 2019 Guidelines and Standards. However, the project had less than significant impact with mitigation for air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, hazards and hazardous materials, and noise and vibration. Staff recommendation is for the city council to adopt a resolution certifying the supplemental environmental impact report, adopt a resolution approving the site's development permits, and adoption of a statement of a variety in considerations for sequoia impacts to cultural resources as previously indicated. This concludes staff presentation, and the applicant is available. We are also available to answer any questions that the mayor or city council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Okay, let's go to the public, and let me just say, I see several hands up from members of the public. And let me be really clear, we're only hearing testimony from the public about this site at 35 South Second Street. If you're concerned about a quick build housing community somewhere else in the city, this is not the time to speak. But we will notify you when it's time to speak, which is open forum, which is in two more items. Tony?
Quinta?
Hello?
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, my name is Quinta. I think, yeah, even though I still want to bring up the COTL VTA. COTL VTA is a part-
No, this is the wrong time, Quinta. Please raise your hand, and two more items.
Mayor, I think just typically we'd hear the applicant first prior to public comment.
Forgive me, I didn't realize, forgive me, we should have an applicant. My fault.
Is he here? I don't know his name.
On Zoom?
Andrew Jacobson.
We have Andrew Jacobson and Jac-
Yep. Can you guys hear me?
Yep, we got you. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you to the council for giving us the opportunity to bring another project forward. This, this one is really important to us and really special. We've done a number of collaborations with the Buckyard Ingles Group, who've also designed the Bank of Italy, which we also own. What really stuck out to us is, you know, when the Bank of Italy was built, it really was a monumental piece, high density, and we're really looking to do the same here. And while respecting the historic district, looking at BART coming downtown, how can we do, you know, add another centerpiece to downtown like Bank of Italy was able to do almost 100 years ago? So with that, I'll hand it over to Jaclyn, who can walk through the design.
Thanks, Andrew. So as you know, the site is located as 35 South Second Street. Here it is in context of downtown San Jose. Given the proximity to adjacent commercial and residential uses, we felt that this was a good site, given the new BART extension to put a mixed-use building with retail, office, and residential uses. And when I say residential, it's purpose-built market rental units. This is an overview of West Bank's redevelopments in downtown San Jose. And here is the site context in the downtown historical context. We have the Bank of Italy Building to the northwest, and the site is located along South Second Street, bound by San Fernando and Santa Clara Street. This is the new stair tower that we've proposed for the Bank of Italy Building down Fountain Alley, and this is the new entry off of Fountain Alley, just down the street from this redevelopment. This is some of the adjacent context and heritage buildings. And something that we were very inspired by was the existing laneways and alleyways that are in the adjacent vicinity. So when we put together the desire to have a mixed-use program of commercial and residential, along with the desire to create a activated public realm, this is a massing concept of how we get to where we are. So on the top left, we have your typical mixed-use building with office at the base in the podium and residential above. Because we want to create a vibrant public realm, we've turned it upside down to have the residential at the base and the office above. And then we've also created a porous retail ground floor. And then from a facade perspective, we've had a smaller articulation at the base, which moves up to a larger articulation on the office above. So here are two renderings from San Fernando and South Second Street. You can see the building in relation to the Bank of Italy Building here. And then in the middle of the building, you can see where we've turned it upside down. We create this large space, which is a publicly accessible space, which we're calling the Urban Room. Here's a view from the Urban Room looking northwest. You can see the spire of the Bank of Italy. And then this is standing inside the Urban Room looking up. Just from a statistics perspective, we have 660,000 square feet of above-grade GFA. It's a 21-story building. We have 194 rental units, 104 one-bedroom, 74 two-bedroom, and 16 three-bedroom units, about 294 parking stalls for car parking, and 478 bike parking stalls. We have amenities located on Level 2 and 11 for the residents. And then for the office, there's a rooftop amenity and running track. And from a sustainability perspective, we're designing the project to lead platinum. Also, ILFI embodied carbon standard for reducing the embodied carbon, and it's designed to well-ready standards for office tenants to designate their fit out as well. And then here's a ground floor plan showing the new alleyways and connections that we're creating through our site. So we have the two kind of legs of the building touching down at grade. And then in the center, you have this large urban room. To the left, you have Fountain Alley. And then to the right, you have an access off of South Second that connects to the south laneway. This is the ground floor plan. The red signifies the retail storefronts. So you'll see that we have a significant amount of retail frontage, not only on the street frontage, but also inside the site. The blue signifies new building entrances. And then from retail perspective, we've taken cues from the adjacent retail storefronts. So here is our retail storefront at grade level, taking some of the cues as to where the awnings and the pilasters are located. And then this is a typical residential plan. This is a typical office floor plan. And this is a roof plan showing the office amenity with outdoor space and a running track. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a beautiful design. Thank you for the presentation. Let's go to the public now.
Okay, as a reminder, this is about the, the project on South Second Street. This is not related to the EIH housing or VTA site. If you want to talk about that, please put your hand down, put it back up at open forum, which is two items from now. Venkatesh?
Again, yeah, Venkatesh here, but I just heard you that, you know, I wanted regarding COTL VTA, I will raise my hand again after two items. Thank-
Mark Ritchie?
Do you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Hi. I'm not on screen, am I? Just a voice?
Just your voice.
Okay, that's fine. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for your consideration of this project. And I'm a local commercial real estate broker and property owner, very active in the downtown community. And I also own three properties in the block to the, directly to the west of the site. We own the Clayton Building on Santa Clara, parking lot on Leiston, and I'm a partner in the building at the corner of First and San Fernando, the historic Wilcox Block. And I just want to state my full support for this project. It's a spectacular work of art and architecture. I think that the scale, which I guess is the objection by the historic, per the historic, is well overridden by the design and the way it integrates with the street and the-
Louis Maranti?
Hi, my name's Louis Maranti. I am Vice President of Public Policy for the Bay Area Council, here tonight to really just rally for this project. We, as, as the Bay Area Council, are very eager to see the state and the region solve its immense home shortage, which is contributing greatly to our cost of living crises, our housing crises, and, and just a general inability to hire and retain employees in the Bay Area. This is just the type of project that's needed to make sure that we're able to do that downtown. We're reducing emissions, we're helping California with our climate goals, we're helping resolve the housing crisis. Projects like this really need a fast track in California, and this, this project in particular rises above many others we've seen recently. Thanks.
Kalia Fetterman?
Good evening, council members. My name is Kalia Fetterman, on behalf of Silicon Valley Residents for Responsible Development. We submitted comments ahead of this hearing addressing the city's continued failure to analyze and mitigate the project's hazardous materials and air quality impacts. The project is contaminated with tetrachloreethylene, but the city has deferred analysis and mitigation until after project approval in violation of SEQA. And the cleanup may result in additional environmental impacts, which must be analyzed in a revised and recirculated EIR. Additionally, our expert consultants found that the project's air pollution may result in significant impacts that were not mitigated. The city must analyze and adopt all feasible mitigation and revise and recirculate EIR before the project can be approved. Thank you.
Corey Cavero?
Hi, I'm concerned that this project is likely to cause substantial environmental damage and is likely to cause serious public health problems from air pollution and soil contamination, and the city should not approve the project today. The project may cause significant air pollution from diesel exhaust, but the EIR does not fully address or mitigate these impacts. The city should include additional mitigation measures to reduce air pollution emissions in revised EIR. Some measures proposed by the Silicon Valley Residence Expert Consultant include using zero emission trucks and equipment onsite instead of diesel-powered trucks and equipment, prohibiting eiling for more than two minutes per hour on the project site, and requiring installation of solar panels and electrical vehicle charging stations on the project site. The city should include these and other reasonable mitigation measures and fully address the project's air pollution impacts in a revised EIR before the project can be approved. Thank you.
Mike Sodergrin?
Mike Sodergrin, Preservation Action Council. Thank you, West Bank, for always being willing to get creative about solving problems when challenged. And so I don't bury the lead. If this project is approved, please, city, place a moratorium on additional development within this historic district. This project doesn't demolish historic buildings. It's built on a parking lot. It meets lots of high-level and vision 2040 goals, but it will contribute significantly and cumulatively to the lost integrity of the downtown commercial historic district. It does not comply with the Department Interior Standards. It does not comply with the city's historic district design guidelines and the SEQA review was inadequate relative to alternatives and cumulative impact. When coupled with proposed projects that are gutting city landmarks within the district, it is not an exaggeration to warn of an impending extinction event of San Jose's historic district. Thank you.
Blair?
Hi, Blair Beekman. Interesting, I'm the next speaker after that last public comment. I have much concern that we are losing historical context in the buildings and the future of San Jose. I hope you can really work to save the downtown buildings that may be renovated because of BART or demolished. We can really work, let's care for the future of our downtown. And with that, I think this building is kind of interesting in that it looks like a real organic building that actually can absorb the future of carbon dioxide and pollution in the future, which is why it may be so interesting. It has a lot of interesting features about it. Really good luck how we debate this modern, primitive look, yet preserving our historic, historical past. Thanks.
Brian?
Yes, thank you. Just make sure that the mitigation does happen through. There's concerns about air pollution, and I've worked with folks that suffer from respiratory issues, and it is a terrible way to go. And I know people don't want to see that happen, so I hope they listen to that. And once we get all this built out, I try to hope VTA can catch up, because that's supposed to be what this is all about. I hope that's dealt with. Sometimes, I have to be honest, sometimes that doesn't seem to be happening. Also, if there's a massive earthquake, I hope we're up to the task of helping lots and lots of folks, because, you know, it is about human life, and it, those are issues that should be discussed. Sometimes I think they're just pushed aside. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Matthew?
Hello, my name is Matthew Pisecchi, and I'm part of the security staff here. I'm representing the United Service Workers West. I'm here to talk about the upcoming, I'm asking to make sure the city council keeps good union jobs for security officers who are contracted to the city of San Jose. I know the city staff plans to ask the council to approve the removal of Allied Universal and replace that contractor with a non-union company. I've lived in Santa, in Santa Clara County my entire-
I believe you were speaking about different items here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are we not in open comments?
Nope, we're on 35 South Second Street, as we said before.
Brittany Smith? Brittany?
Yes, I'll wait till open comments. I'm also with SGA.
Back to council.
Thank you. All right, back to the city council. Councilmember Pross?
Yeah, thank you. I'll be brief. For those who are seeing on the screen, this is a sign that my son made me. So I just want to say thank you, city staff, for your work on this. Thank you to West Bank for their investment. And for those that are aware, this Fountain Alley location has been, year over year, one of the most crime-ridden areas of the downtown, and always been a challenge. We've, we've had some development opportunities. We've had businesses in and out of some of the buildings around there, but it's continually been a struggle. We've attempted throughout my eight years to find ways to see how we can activate it. But ultimately, the biggest culprit that we have in the downtown core are vacant surface parking lots, and vacant lots for that matter. This is a great opportunity to be able to revitalize that area, invest in it. I recognize that we're not going to hit perfect when it comes to everybody's interest, especially when it comes to historic nature of this entire area. But we are talking about an investor developer that is preserving the Bank of Italy, that is allowing this area to be able to be built up, but at the same time preserve the historical elements that we want to see there. I think this is going to be a great opportunity for our historic district and Fountain Alley area, and I will make a motion to approve the staff request.
Second. Live emphatic seconds. Okay. Is anyone trying to raise their hand right now to speak, because I'm not seeing it on my screen? No. All right. Well, I'll echo all the thanks. This is a fantastic design. I do have one quick question, though, which is markets are really changing dramatically around what's financeable and what's not. I'm just curious, with a site development permit, are they locked in on that office? If they want to, for example, use that same space to instead expand residential? Can they do that, and is there a way we can give them the flexibility to do that?
Uh, Mayor, this is Robert Manford, Deputy Director for Planning. To the extent, from a SEQA standpoint, yes, we'll have to look at it. To the extent that whatever they are doing is within what has been analyzed, that is true. But also from a development review standpoint, we can look into either an adjustment or an amendment to the permit.
Does that have to come back to council, or can it just happen through staff?
That is yet to be determined, but for amendments, if it does not trigger additional SEQA, it will be at the director hearing level.
Okay. All right, that's great, because I, I know it's tough getting financing right now, and it'd be great to have that flexibility, given the land use designation certainly would allow it. Anyway, thank you to Andrew and the West Bank team, and to Gary and everybody who's making this happen. This is fantastic. Okay, let's vote.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Peralas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis? Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Here.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Liccardo?
Aye. Okay. Item 10.3 is administrative hearing on environmental appeal of the Eternate Tower. We'll go-
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Chris Burton, Director of Planning, Building Code Enforcement. I'm going to hand it over to David Keon for the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. David Keon, Principal Planner on Planning, Building Code Enforcement. Before you, and item 10.3 is an administrative hearing on the environmental appeal of the planning director's reliance on the Eternate Tower Mixed Use Development Project Addendum to the Downtown Strategy 2040 EIR. So this project is a proposed tower that would allow the demolition of two onsite two-story buildings and allow the construction of a 26-story, approximately 184,000 gross square foot mixed-use building consisting of 192 units and ground floor retail. The project, there was a SEQA clearance, it was an addendum to the Downtown Strategy 2040 EIR, and this identified significant impacts consistent with the Downtown Strategy EIR to air quality, biological resources, and all the other topic issues that were evaluated in that EIR. Just in the environment, actually, there we go. So the environment background, the initial study addendum was posted to the city's website on August 11, prior to the director's hearing, which was heard on August 24. The city, at that director's hearing, the city took public testimony and from several groups, including Adam's Broadway, representing the citizens, San Jose Residents for Responsible Development, as well as VTA and others. After that, the director's deputy approved the project and certified, actually certified the addendum and approved the project. Within a timely manner, staff received an appeal of the environmental determination on August 26. The city has responded to these allegations made in this appeal. These are included in the memorandum that was submitted, and that is for November, that was posted on November 30. Appellant and interested parties receive notice pursuant to our code. The main reasons for the appeal were that the claim is that there's an improper reliance on the addendum, that the project results in significant air quality impacts that were not evaluated in the Downtown Strategy EIR, and the claim is that the project results in significant impacts related to hazardous and hazardous materials due to existing contamination on the site and air quality due to generators. And the city's response, as, as demonstrated in the November 30 memo, the city has responded to these, these concerns. The Downtown Strategy EIR is a programmatic document that has project-level analysis included for the evaluated growth. Oh, sorry, I didn't go all the way through. Thank you. Thank you. And the addendum addressed the specific project-level impacts of the project and identified there would be no new significant impacts or no increase in the severity of the impacts identified in the original EIR. The air quality and hazardous materials analysis and mitigation from the Downtown Strategy 2040 EIR are sufficient, and the technical studies support this and disclose all the impacts that were disclosed in the addendum are consistent with the Downtown Strategy 2040 EIR. Therefore, staff's determination that an addendum is appropriate is supported by substantial evidence and by city policy and practice, and is consistent with other projects evaluated in the downtown area of similar impacts. Therefore, staff, therefore, staff will recommend that the city council adopt a resolution denying the environmental appeal and upholding the planning directors' reliance on the Eternate Tower mixed-use development project addendum to the Downtown Strategy 2040 EIR in accordance with SEQA. Thank you. Staff is available if there's any questions.
Thank you, David. I think we should first hear from the appellant, is that right? Okay, let's hear from the appellant. Who is the appellant? I don't know who that is.
Me neither.
It's the union, the labor.
Should be somebody representing San Jose residents for responsible development, so it would be someone from Adams-Broadwell, Joseph and Cordoza.
Do you know a name? I have a Kalia Fetterman, could that be? And I have Albert Lester Norcal Carpenter's.
Guessing it's Albert, but-
Okay.
I don't know.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Sir, yeah, can we just find out, do you represent, is it Citizens for Responsible Development?
No, I'm with Northern California Carpenter's.
Okay, we'll get to you in just one moment, sir. We just want to-
I think it would be Fetterman.
Okay.
Yes, hi, on behalf of the appellant.
Okay.
Yes, um, okay.
Welcome. We can hear you. At least we did a minute ago.
Yeah, I promoted her to panelist in case.
Okay.
So she's there.
You can begin.
Yes, hi, it was changing my status. Yeah, good evening, honorable council members. Mayor, my name is Kalia Fetterman, on behalf of Silicon Valley Residents for Responsible Development. We appeal the approval of the Eternate Mixed Use Project because the city is trying to approve this project under an addendum when a full EIR is required. An addendum is not the correct environmental review document under SEQA because it identifies significant effects not discussed in the previous EIR, fails to comply with the requirements for program-level environmental review, and fails to adequately evaluate the project's impacts of air pollution, contamination, and historical resources, and lacks substantial evidence to support its conclusions. The city cannot make the necessary findings to approve a site development permit because the air pollution from construction and operation of the project will have a significant impact on adjacent properties. Our air quality and health expert presented substantial evidence in his comments that the impacts from construction emissions and the backup generator may result in significant unmitigated impacts on the adjacent properties. Additionally, absent the use of Tier IV final engines, the project will result in significant unmitigated impacts associated with diesel particulate matter. These impacts will adversely impact nearby sensitive receptors, including the future 19 North Second Street Affordable Senior Housing Project, just to the northeast of the project site. The city cannot approve the site development permit today, absent additional mitigation. The city cannot approve the addendum and must prepare a subsequent EIR to comply with SEQA. Thank you.
Okay, should we hear from the applicant next?
Yes, Mayor, I believe that's Kurt Anderson.
I have a Kurt with no last name.
Let's take Kurt.
I clicked allow to speak to Kurt.
Kurt, if you can hear us, this is your chance.
Are you Kurt Anderson? He is not responding. So he was not responding, is there anybody else?
Maybe we'll go to the public until Kurt or his representative wants to appear.
So the next speaker is Albert.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Albert Luscher with Norcal Carpenter's Local Union 405. I'm here today to express my support to Eternate Tower Mixed Use Project. The Norcal Carpenter's support of this project is because it has committed to using a responsible contractor. This project is going to benefit our community by creating much-needed housing in our city by building 197 units and allocating 20% off below market rate. Also, this project is consistent with the City of San Jose 2040 general plan. This project has been well-planned and has reserved a specific area for future access point for the upcoming BART station, and also, this project will have a backup generator that will help in the case of a power outage. This is exciting news. We have a responsible developer that cares about our community as well. This project will foster local higher apprenticeship programs, healthcare, and liberal wages for all construction workers during the duration of the project. This is exactly what a responsible-
Brian?
It looks like a good project. I do hope people do take into account the SEQA issues. I don't mean any offense, because you're all very fine folks. It's just, it seems like sometimes these decisions were already made, and these appeals were already decided before there's even any kind of input. That's probably just a bit emotional, but anyways, thank you.
Cory?
The council should grant the appeal, the city's approval of the Eternate Project because the city is trying to rush this project through without conducting the proper environmental review. The city released an addendum for this project instead of the full environmental impact report, even though the project results in serious environmental impacts. An expert found that project may result in serious public health impacts from air pollution and hazardous contamination. The lot immediately adjacent to the project site is under investigation for hazardous contamination, and the site itself may have dangerous levels of contamination in the soil and groundwater. The project risks the safety and well-being of the community by bringing construction workers and residents to the site before the contamination is cleaned up. The city should grant the appeal and go back and do an environmental impact report, which fully evaluates the hazardous contamination and fully mitigates it before the project can be approved. Thank you.
Galaxy?
Can you hear me now, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, it's a little technical difficulty here. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Kurt Anderson. I'm a principal of Anderson Architects. We are obviously architects for the project. I'd like to extend our appreciation to the staff for all their hard work to get us to this point. It's been wonderful, Myra, Robert, Chris, the whole, the whole team, they've just done an outstanding job to get us to this point. I know that this council has seen this situation before from these same type of appellants, and as the North Cal Union has indicated, we are in working with the amount of signatory capacity to move this project forward. I believe that the staff has done everything that's been required by the SEQA and the requirements of the city to really prove this project move forward. We think it's going to be a great, great benefit to the community. It's going to be, we're putting high-density houses right over a BART station. I think it's going to be an absolutely wonderful addition to downtown. And we, I respect for the request and approval by the council. And before I go, Councilman Paralus, thank you so much for all your eight years of time on the council. I've enjoyed working with you on my projects in your district, and I wish best of luck to you. So without further ado, Mr. Mayor and the council, I respectfully request an approval so we can proceed with our project. Well, I guess, actually, I requested denial of the appeal is what I'm really speaking for.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, right?
Thanks, Kurt.
All right. And happy holidays, everybody. Stay safe and be healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt.
I also have one public speaker in person I forgot to call, Blair.
It's nice to hear someone calling you out on SEQA issues at this time for the past two items. I think we're not quite fully sure about our SEQA future at this point, and I think the person has offered some good lessons in due diligence, that if you want to, you know, take up those good practices, I hope you guys can work out something together that is safer for the future of a city. And it's good oversight practices, that it's nice to hear. And I hope that this sort of project, being right by the BART station and everything, is indicative of the concepts of a real affordable housing for people in the future, and that mass transit is something that should be shared by all parts of a community and for the future of downtown. Thank you.
Back to the council. Oh, Chuck Hammers?
Hi, Mayor Licardo, Chuck Hammers here. As many of you know, I've spent 35 years working downtown, volunteering, promoting the downtown, and I can remember 30 years ago going into Frank Taylor and pleading that they put money and put projects right in the core of the downtown, and I am so excited about this project, so I really hope this gets approved. This will be such a jewel to be put into Fountain Alley in the area, so I hope you guys find a way to approve it, and happy holidays to all of you.
Kevin? Okay, back to council.
All right, Councilor Pross?
Yeah, thank you, and I'll respectfully disagree with Blair and say I have truly enjoyed working with our planning staff and the professionals that we have in the planning department. We've had a number of these SEQA challenges and appeals over my time on the council on almost 75, 80% of the projects that are coming through downtown, maybe more, nodding heads. And I really trust the professionals that we have in our planning department, the work that you've done, and I've been confident throughout this entire time in supporting you in that work. So thank you for that, and I will move to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
Thank you, it's motion second. I just had a question for staff about the VTA issues.
Yeah.
Can we see what Ron Gollum has said on the record? I know we're, I've had the back and forth several times with Ron and other VTA staff. Why is it everybody else can build a high-rise over transit and we can't, since after all, that's what I thought transit-oriented development was about? Bluntly, I don't think VTA has any incentive or motivation to promote good transit-oriented development. We should. Is it time for us to go get a consultant, go get somebody who's an expert in understanding what it takes to build on top of a subway? And find out what can be done within reason, so that we don't have to sacrifice our ambitions for a vibrant downtown to a transit project that is going to somehow or another render us a suburban city in select areas?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think it's a valid point, it's a good question. Certainly from the city side, our focus is absolutely on delivering high-quality design in an urban form that matches our vision for the future of downtown. So, you know, certainly that's where, as we've worked through this project, right, that's the intent in sort of maximizing that opportunity. As far as the opportunity to engage with a consultant, I think it's an interesting idea, let us take it back and kind of discuss it with the partners throughout our CSA and see what that opportunity looks like and how best to coordinate across the different departments.
Yeah, and I know, look, I know this is an iterative conversation, VTA should be in as well, but I just don't think they have the incentive to do anything other than try to build as cheaply as possible, because they've got a project that has inflated in cost. And, you know, I understand the motivations to try to deliver a project, I just think we have more comprehensive motivation, so I'd like to see how we could bring them in to look at some alternatives. Thank you very much, Chris, and thank you to Robert and David and Rose on the entire team. All right, let's vote.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Paralas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Crossco?
Aye.
Davis? Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Licardo?
Aye.
All right, we're onto open forum.
Blair?
Hi, guys, our last meeting of the year, over lifetimes, basically. Thanks for everything. To counter a bit, the final words that were spoken on the previous item, I think a little more tact could have been used by yourselves. I think you could have offered a little bit more grace in how you could have spoken about these projects, as I tried to do, and that I hope you'll take to heart, you know, to address the future of pollution issues and SEQA. With my final 30 seconds, I just wanted to, I hope in the next year that we really want to talk openly about issues of planning, and if things need to be addressed, that we're not afraid to address them, say in memos, in, you know, the public meeting process, and we don't have to fear talking about what may be important subjects in 2023 and how to get to 2024 and 25, really good years. Thanks for all the work, everybody.
Happy holidays, Blair.
Can you tell me your name?
Jesse Noble.
You put in a card for a previous item?
Yeah.
This is for open forum?
It's this that we just voted on, Eternate Tower.
Right, but we already devoted on that, so you could talk during open forum about a topic that wasn't already on the agenda. So you could talk about a new topic, but not that one.
Right, I have the leeway, but I could also still talk about that too, right? Since it's open anyway?
No, this is-
No, only speaking items not on the agenda, sir.
Oh, really? Okay. Because lead platinum is good, I mean, people missed a big point. That's a, that project's being done really responsibly, and people were speaking out against it environmentally.
Sir, you can only speak on items not on the agenda.
Okay, well, I just wanted to support that, so I guess that's it then.
Hi, my name is Vicki, and I object to build an EIH at the Cuddle VTA Station. The city decision to build an EIH at the Cuddle VTA is basically taking our only VTA station in one of the highest densely populated area in District 2 and District 10, and use it to build to home only 100 people. By doing so, the city is preventing thousands of our community members from utilizing our only VTA station. It just does not make sense. So we are encouraging the city's staff to go and look for an underutilized site that is already flat, meets the city EIH guidelines, and does not require a major construction. Thank you.
Brian?
Well, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Licardo and everybody on the council, thank you for your service. It has been, you can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, my finger isn't ticking off. Anyways, Mr. Licardo and been a good, well, we're not good friends, but I always looked up to you, still do, and all the council people that are leaving and Mayor, I hope I just wish the best for San Jose, you know, I do, and I wish all of you a happy holiday. I know it sounds sort of contrite, but I wish peace on earth, because if we don't have it, you know, all the rest of the stuff we're doing is rather mute. And happy holidays.
Brian, thank you for the kind words. Happy holidays to you.
Katie?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Katie, and I live in District 10. I want to let you know that I am opposing the use of the Cuddle VTA locations for EIH because it is a busy intersection with nearby hospital and daycare center. The location should be used for commuters. The EIH sites are not evenly distributed among all the districts. Why are there emphasis on other area? Thank you.
Nita and Katan?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hi, my name is Nita, I live in District 10, about a mile away from the Cuddle VTA Station. I live in District Ten, about a mile away from the Cottle VTA station. And I am not against this homeless and the EIH concept, but I believe that the Cottle VTA station is not the right location. Because this Cottle VTA station is fully functional VTA station. It had hundred percent utilization before the pandemic. Parking for the VTA passengers would be very difficult. So Cottle VTA is not, and plus the Cottle VTA is in the middle of a busy intersection. So it's not a right site for the EIH home. So I oppose this Cottle VTA station, yeah, for the EIH homes. Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, first of all, thank you, Honorable Mayor and Vice Mayor and council members that are departing council. San Jose is blessed to have leaders that sometimes occupy a lonely space when the public disagrees with the decisions. Never, I never doubt the integrity, honesty and hard work of San Jose's leadership and I thank you for it. I would just make one parting ask. Given all the effort that has gone into achieving the envisioned twenty forty goals, perhaps San Jose can put up on its website a progress monitor to the meaning of housing goals, affordable app market, commercial, whatever, and, you know, distinguish what's actually being done or been done and that which is entitled and give us a sense of what's yet to come. Thank you.
Madhukar?
Hi, my name is Madhukar Thakur. I live in District Ten, about a mile from the Cottle Road VTA station. I'm in support of getting the homeless into transient housing and finding a solution, a permanent solution for them. However, I believe Cottle Road is, VTA station is not the right location for it. It is just too dangerous for people who would live there. The only way for the people who would live there in the EIH homes is walking way out of there is to cross two very busy on-ramps to Highway eighty-five that are full at any time of the day. So this would be sort of waiting for a disaster to happen and I hope the city reconsider their decision and not have a, the ETA, EIH built at the VTA Cottle Road station. Take the risk into account when you make your decision. Thank you.
Topher?
Hello, yeah. EIH homes at Cottle is a disproportionate use of South San Jose neighborhoods for EIH developments and is part of a spread-out and lackluster solution. In recent years, sideshows have been met with spread-out and ineffective policing. However, recently, San Jose addressed the sideshow with visible, central and coordinated response that showed effectiveness and was praised region-wide. We need similar approaches for our homeless response, a single, central, visible solution and not spread-out solutions tucked into neighborhoods. There are a number of large land areas in this town, nearby farmland, open space, the fairgrounds and more. With these, we can employ the same tiny home approach, but be far more effective with directed amenities and solutions for this problem and not force distributed management into neighborhoods. Thank you.
Ruth?
I, uh, hello, council members and mayor. I'm proud that the city of San Jose has taken a strong stance against wage theft and enacted a policy that it is now enforcing. I also believe that the strongest protection from wage theft is to have a CBA that includes a grievance procedure with clear timelines and arbitration. Studies have shown that wage theft is insignificant at union companies. The current janitorial company disqualified by the wage theft policy is non-union, but it will be covered by a CBA in January. The contractor that'll take its place is non-union and has been, non-union and has been in business a short time. Unless the employer agrees, there'll be no union at the successor employers and the workers will lose a layer of protection against wage theft and just cause termination standard that will eliminate the fear of retaliation. We don't want to see janitorial workers go backwards. We don't foresee this issue with any-
Araceli?
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'm Araceli, I'm with SEIU USWW. I'm here today to ask City Council to support good union jobs for security officers who are contracted by the city of San Jose. The city staff plans to ask council to approve the removal of Allied Universal and replace a contractor with a non-union company. The employees at the city of San Jose are scheduled to be covered by a collective bargaining agreement in January. The city used the current wage theft policy to disquali, to disqualify Allied Universal. I strongly encourage the City Council to choose a contractor whose workers are covered by a collective bargaining agreement. Thank you.
Brittany?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Brittany Smith. I am a member of SEIU USWW and I'm asking that you reconsider allowing officers to be covered under a union contract. I've been in security for six, eight years. Of that twelve years, I was an at-well employee. In twenty-twenty, I was laid off and later fired without notification. However, my union had me reinstated. Without my union fighting to get my job back, I would have suffered economic, economic harm. That's many of the realities that officers face day-to-day at the mercy of their employers. So I'm asking you to stand behind the people that put their lives on the line to, to protect yours and call for unionization, show the brave men and women. Thank you for your time.
Music India Foundation?
Hello, can you hear?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Yeah, my name is Ravishankar. I live in Santa Teresa. Namaste to all. So the reason the call is, I know like the San Jose City Council is doing a lot for the unfortunate homeless people, the tiny homes, the safe RV parking, now EIH. The question to you, City Council, is why everything is ending up in South San Jose? Why it is not equally distributed? We are, I am a Santa Teresa resident. I am really concerned about the quality of life going forward here. That's my question. So I would like to stop the EIH project, EIH project here. Thank you.
Sarita? Sarita Sharma? Okay, moving on to RFAM. Accidentally, we clicked on Jismol. Gee, go ahead.
Yeah. Hey, my name is Jismol. I object the Cottle, I object the EIH on Cottle Road. I believe as a citizen, our voice should be considered like before you make like a big decision around our neighborhood. You know, you, you know, you need to equally spread it out, like everything is in South San Jose. As a South San Jose person who lives here, you know, I am really concerned. Why can't we just spread it out? Like, I know, like, there is a lot of, like, rich areas, but I do not know why you're not even considering building like any EIH there. So this is my concern. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
RFAM? RFAM?
Yes, thank you for my time to express my disapproval with the decision by Mayor and, and council members on November twenty-ninth to install EIH at Cottle VTA station. The decision to install EIH at the Cottle VTA station is a bad decision. Here's the reason why. Cottle VTA station has been a vital part of South San Jose residents. We have been using this location as a parking lot for work and school. Cottle VTA was built with taxpayer money and the return on investment we no longer accountable for upcoming transit projects, the future market extension to San Jose or future expansion of existing VTA station. Taxpayer like us will have a hard time to approve any measure for putting this project, knowing what the city government had done to Cottle VTA station. This is a trust issue. I urge the mayor and council members to listen to us and vote the decision on November twenty-nine. Thank you.
Venkatesh?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm Venkatesh, I live in District Ten. I'm getting, thanks for the second opportunity to talk to you. Last time, a few days back, I was in person there to voice my concern and opposition to the EIH housing that is coming up in the Cottle VTA parking lot. Again, as mentioned by me earlier and by other speakers here, it is not a right location considering the heavy traffic at this junction, as well as there is a single entrance to this parking lot and it is going to be a huge security risk and a safety risk, you know, to have this housing in that location. While I'm completely supportive of providing the housing for the homeless, it has to be looked at in a different location. I strongly urge for the same. Thank you.
Isaac?
Yeah, again, my name is Isaac. I'm president of the Pami Association. We believe that the Cottle VTA station is not the right location for the EIH for the following reason. The Cottle VTA had been, has been extensively used by the community before the pandemic. During the November nineteen City Council meeting, city staff showed the Cottle VTA with an empty parking lot. This was misleading picture and does not represent reality. The Google historical picture shows and proves that the Cottle VTA station was fully utilized before the pandemic. Also during the same meeting, staff, city staff said that many of the people who used the VTA before the pandemic were Kaiser employees. This is also not true. The healthcare worker never stopped going to work, even during the pandemic. And given, and given that the Cottle VTA parking lot was empty during COVID, proves, just proved that the people using the VTA were not Kaiser employee, it was us, our community members. Thank you.
Yuki?
Oh, this is Yuki. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, cool. So I'm also a resident at South San Jose, I five one three, near Cottle VTA station. Ever since I moved here, use that VTA station for commuting. And I've seen like it's at least half of the parking lot are filled with cars that are regular commuters. And taking over half of the space for the EIH, I don't think it's a good idea. I'm not against the EIH idea, but the location is not a good choice. This goodwill should not be based on compromising our benefits. So I'm against the location choice. I think we should rethink about the location. Thank you.
Sri, Srinivasan?
Hello, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Thiago Srinivasan. I'm a longtime resident of District Ten and I really appreciate the opportunity to speak here and voice my concerns. I'm calling today to register my strong concern and dismay at the proposal to build the EIH at the Cottle VTA parking lot. I would say this is a very ill-advised move, at least. The VTA parking lot was very heavily used till the onset of the pandemic, as somebody was pointing out earlier also. And with multiple new housing units in the vicinity recently, this need only increase in the near future, I would think. My family was regularly using the VTA, VTA to commute to work as many of my fellow residents around this area. So to say that the VTA parking lot is needed is dubious, to say the least. I strongly protest this proposal, but can only be due to the area by residents much less safe. Please consider it. Thank you.
Amanda?
Hi, good evening. My name is Amanda. I'm a resident of the South San Jose. Here I urge the council to reconsider the EIH site chosen at Cottle VTA for the following reasons. One is I use the site for work on a weekly basis and I'm very concerned about the parking limitation once the EIH site is built. Because it will, you know, discourage the residents of using the public transportation and will just cause more traffic jam. And also, if, if you go to the site, you will see it's decided is, is really not a good location to build the EIH homes because it's not ready to use of the slope of that area. It will just need extra effort and a lot of money and time to turn it into an EIH. So better site should be reconsidered.
Waskar?
Good afternoon, or good evening, excuse me, Mayor and Council. My name is Waskar Castro with Working Partnerships and I'm here to stand alongside many of our partners that are really urging that the city go with a contractor that's going all union. Of course, fully recognizing that there's the only way to really ensure that all our workers are getting a fair level of protection just through a collective bargaining agreement. And for that reason, we strongly encourage the City Council to choose a contractor whose workers are covered by a collective bargaining agreement, not only to provide a higher level of protection against wage theft, it can also help with recruitment and retention as well. Thank you very much.
Matthew?
Thank you, City Council, and I apologize for my earlier interruption. I'm another member of the United Service Workers West and I'm here to talk about the union protections for the workers in the city of San Jose. I have lived in Santa Clara County my entire life. My parents are both, were both employees of the county as nurses with a combined seventy-five years of, of service for this county. And it is very important that worker protections come first in a county like this. It comes, it's important everywhere, but especially in a place where we see such rampant wealth disparity, or we see such problems with wage theft. It is important that the unions be the ones to handle this and that you let union workers have the protections that they need. Thank you very much.
Kevin?
Hi, yes, my name is Kevin Adams. I'm a security officer for twenty, sorry, for thirty-two years. I work for, I work with USWW, SEIU USWW. And during the time that I was doing a security officer, I'm going to give you a quick little story, that I was working at a location where I had to patrol the building. I was on the upper floors and while I was on the upper floor, patrolling the building, doing my job, someone crashed their car into the building. When I returned to the lobby, I ran the cameras back to find out exactly what happened. The client said they thought that I should have been on duty in the lobby, even though part of my job was to do the rounds of the building. I found out the next day that I had been terminated, not removed from the site, terminated, because they felt the fact that I was, but I did my job. So I would, I want the, the council to take a second look at this because it's important for union jobs.
Ariel?
Hi, my name is Ariel Park and I'm also a member of SEIU USWW. And I want to thank the mayor and the City Council. You guys are working really late today and, but I also want to urge, I also want to urge the, I also want to urge you to stay with the company that, that has a union collective bargaining agreement and, and that, and that will also, will also help reinforce your, the wage theft policies that you guys have. So anyway, anyway, we, we want to, we want to keep union jobs in, in Silicon Valley. Thank you.
Kunta?
Hi, my name is Kunta. Cottle VTA is a park and ride station and over the past few years, lots of high-density apartment, townhouse, single-family home have been built. The population in this area has been growing. And once everybody's back to work full-time, the Cottle VTA will be even more utilized than before. This align with the goal of VTA for reducing carbon footprint and overloading the heavily congested highway. Now, the idea of EIH, a Cottle VTA totally defeat the park and ride purpose. The remaining small parking space won't be able to support more VTA riders plus vehicle from the EIH residents. This means fewer people riding the VTA, more car will be stuck on the highway and city would ask for more money to fund the highway expansion. Even worse, it's bad for the environment. All of us would suffer. Thank you.
Tijinder?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council member and all city staff. I work in a, as SEI union and also newly-elect on the E board member. I need to request for all the city staff and our mayor, so please consider, so take, don't take our rights, so the union and to keep the union job and to protect our families, the middle-class families.
families, the middle-class families, and the union is one way to have to listen and consider to all of our rights and pay rates, and also the sick leave and all the medical insurance. So, please consider to continue keeping the union job on the Silicon Valley, and thank you so much, and happy holiday, all of you.
Back to the council.
All right, the meeting's adjourned. Happy holidays, everybody.